Good evening and welcome to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors meeting. Business meeting Tuesday, July 18, 2023, 7:00 PM. Board meeting room 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Eames?
Present.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Would you all join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you all. Moving to item five, agenda items to be added. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that to add the following item to the agenda as item number thirteen A under matters from work session, county's health insurance premium and HSA contribution to accept the proposed premium breakdown as discussed in the work session and increase the HSA contribution from eight hundred to a thousand dollars per employee per year.
So moved. Second. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we're ready to vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Moving to item six, can I get a motion to for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tucker. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Whoa, 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 whoa. Mr. Chairman, we've got to remove some things.
Yeah, we've got to remove something.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Tucker, will you just move your?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, moving back to item five. All right. Ms. Ragsdale, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending that you remove the public hearing for the RPD zoning ordinance amendments after hearing from multiple board members regarding concerns of hearing this tonight when we are hearing the rezoning application in August. Staff would like additional time to make sure that all citizens' concerns are being addressed in both the ordinance revisions as well as the rezoning request. So staff is proposing that you remove the ordinance revisions from tonight's agenda and we will re-advertise the case and it will be heard at the August meeting with the rezoning application.
That's item J off of the consent agenda. Do we need a motion for that? Oh, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, we're going to need a motion for that and it's not on the consent agenda. It's the other public hearing tonight.
Okay. Oh, item ten.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. Can I get a motion to remove this item from the agenda?
Yes, sir, I support that. I'll make the motion.
So let's make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of the ordinance, RPD, public hearing and defer it to the August board business meeting.
Okay. Do you need redo that, Vic?
Yeah, that's good.
Make the motion. Okay.
I'll second what Vaden said. How about that?
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion?
Also, yeah, just for the folks that did show up, maybe that you wanted to speak tonight, you can still speak even though we're not, just to let you know.
No, they can't.
They can speak during public hearing.
Only if they signed up.
That's what I'm saying. It's a pile of them signed up, I think.
Okay.
Okay. All right?
All right. We're ready to vote? All right, seven to zero, remove that item from the agenda. All right, moving to item six, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Darrell, we just approved the agenda with that removed item, so we can just fast forward to the next agenda.
Okay. All right, sorry about that. Oh, moving to item seven.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. All right, motion by Mr. Warren, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scares. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. Moving to item eight, presentations, oh, board members, do we have anything we need to present at the front? All right, okay, we'll move down to the front, gentlemen.
While she's making her journey up here, I wanted to say how glad I was that she and Lee helped me get out of high school. It's amazing that we're here tonight. Pam, it's my honor to present you with this certificate of appreciation and it reads, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere appreciation to you for your twenty-two years of service to the county. During your career as a dispatcher and assistant shift supervisor, you have many accomplishments to be proud of. We thank you for your hard work and dedication and we wish you the very best in your retirement. Given this eighteenth day of July, 2023, William V. Ingram, Tunstall District Supervisor, Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much, Pam. Thank you. We're going to do a solo pitch and then we're going to get our family. Lee and the rest of the family, would you all come down if you could? Y'all give Pam a round of applause. Thank you. Way too long. Anything over five minutes too long. Yeah, come on. But I don't care, it's going to be gone.
All right. Moving to, all right. Moving to item nine, hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or land owner of the county and arrested agent of such resident or land owner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name, district and audio tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the public hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individually member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priorities at the next board meeting. At the chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. And we do have a pretty good list tonight, don't we, Ms. McCluster?
Yes, sir.
And I would like to correct something that I done in the last meeting and I was wrong because I felt like it won't fire everybody here. I did grant some extra time. We are limited to three minutes, a total of forty-five minutes for the meeting, so I want to be fair to everyone that comes through the meeting and so be. I do not, I'm not going to grant an additional time. We want to stick to the three minutes, be respectful of what you got to say because I know we got a pretty good list. But again, I was wrong. I do apologize for doing that, but moving forward, we're going to stick to our time that everybody else gets. And with that, we are ready for the hearing of the citizens. Ms. McCluster?
Natalie Bennett?
Good evening, board members, citizens of Pennsylvania County. My name is Natalie Bennett. I live in the Tunstall District on Whispering Pines Road in the Axton community. I'm addressing the board in reference to the requested zoning ordinance changes submitted by Southside Investing LLC, applicable to the six hundred and fourteen acre approximately one square mile tract of land conveniently located fifteen minutes from Danville and Martinsville cities. This request is to change the six hundred and fourteen acres from A1 add to RPD residential planned unit development and allows for a mixed use development to be imposed upon our community. That's a grand total of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine housing units and one hundred and eighty thousand square feet of dedicated commercial space. The roadways impacted include Martin Drive, Highway fifty-eight, Heat Orchard Road, and Sugar Tree Lane. This is an enormous increase in population density for our rural area. Nowhere else in any district within the county is the population even close to this suggested high density being requested and slated for our quiet rural community. Where I live feels like the county. Current residents and taxpaying citizens living there want it to continue to feel like the county. We do not want a city in our backyards. Statistics relative to the number of people living per square mile for your seven districts include Banner, forty-five people per square mile, Callens, roughly thirty-seven, Chatham Blairs, one thirty-three, Dan River, sixty-four, Stoughton River, fifty-two, almost fifty-three, Tunstall, sixty-one, Westover, one fifty-nine point five, all of these people per square mile. Yet, we are being asked to just accept without question or hesitation zoning changes that would allow for, conservatively speaking, four thousand five hundred residents to move in and occupy land within just one square mile within our community. Do you have any idea of the impacts that we will be forced to deal with day to day? Did you know that density per square mile of Raleigh is only three thousand people? Norfolk is forty-five hundred. Do we want a Norfolk in Tunstall? I say no. Southside Investing is asking for four to five thousand people to come to our one square mile tract of land in the Rossville area. If you've ever traveled to Norfolk or Wally, the traffic nightmare alone is enough to make you cringe. There have been no traffic studies, no plans in place for mitigating environmental concerns such as stream impacts and storm water management, which are both required by the DEQ due to the enormity of this development property. Any streams impacted for greater than three hundred linear feet cumulatively requires mitigation impact purchases to the tune of four to six hundred dollars per linear foot. Who's footing that bill? Are the roads going to be to VDOT standards? This is an HOA community, as is being proposed, with commercial services to residents of the planned area.
Ms. Bennett?
We are open-minded and we thank you for your time and we hope that you consider all that we brought before you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. Welcome, sir.
My name is John Cruz. I'm from Tunstall District.
Sir?
Pull that mic up a little bit.
Pull your mic up a little bit, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to speak about this proposed mega development here. Me and my wife could have chose to live in a city. We could have chose to live in a suburb or one of these subdivisions. We grew up in a county, own farms, we worked on farms, we learned that way of living, work ethic. We do not want this in our backyard. Now, I've been told by people that it's not going to affect them and if I don't like it, we can always sell and move. Why do I need to sell my property? Why do me and my wife need to move when all our memories of raising our kids and our grandkids own this property? Why do I have to deal with all the congestion that this is going to bring? I've been told property values will go up anywhere from twenty-five, fifty percent. Flip side of that, property tax is going to go up too. Property tax is already kicking the butt every year. I mean, what are we going to benefit from? What did people in this community do to deserve this because this is the way we're looking at it? The other thing I would say is, if every one of y'all could sit down to a polygraph and be told one statement and ask one question, how many could pass it? If you were told this development was coming to your road, your community, across in your backyard, could you honestly pass a polygraph and say you still support it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elena Kiscadon?
Good evening. My name is Elena Kiscadon. I live at twenty-six fifty-two Sugar Tree Church Road in the Tunstall District. So I'm a fairly new resident to this area. I live, I came here, lived in Danville, Everett. I was originally from Pennsylvania. I lived in the city of Danville for several years and then I bought property in Eden, North Carolina, and I recently came back, two years, in this area. And I chose this area because, you know, we're talking about housing for people. So I'm one of those people that wanted to buy a house in this area. So I chose this area because I wanted an agricultural lifestyle. I wanted to live in the quiet. I used to live ten minutes from a grocery store. I don't miss that. I don't mind taking the time to drive. I don't mind the detox time. So some of the other things I wanted to address at the meeting the other night, Vic was able to get together with everybody, I wanted to touch upon some of the things, the information that was there. One of them is about the school district. I have a son that's about to turn two years old, so that's also why I chose to move out of the city of Eden into Tunstall. I was a former teacher. I did my student aiding and student teaching at Tunstall High School, so I'm aware, well aware of the quality of education that is in this area. And I wanted my child to have that same quality of education. I am greatly concerned as a parent about what will happen to these school systems based on what Dr. Jones said. Our current, on our teacher current load, we can only take five hundred students with the staffing that's in the schools, that we can put in the schools, that would be eight hundred students. If we go with the average of three people per household and there's nineteen hundred houses in this complex, then that would be nineteen hundreds. That would be two times what they say our potential capacity is. However, on our current staffing level, in which we have teaching shortages, that would be four times the amount of our current staffing. So we're talking, I mean, what's going to happen with these kids? Where are they going to go? And what's the quality of the education that's going to be there? I taught, I had classes where I had over thirty students and I had classes where I had like twelve to fifteen students. It's a big difference on what you can get through to children in a smaller classroom size. Also, the housing sales expert, Ms. Ware, she addressed the, what people wanted. They wanted single detached housing units or villa styles. Went to the census.gov. Pennsylvania County household income, forty-nine thousand. Household income for Danville, thirty-eight thousand. Household income, this is not individual incomes. The median value of owner occupied dwellings in Danville, ninety-one thousand. For the county, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And they want to try to sell these for two to three hundred, if not more. So is this really serving our current residents and what we need? I understand about the mega park and all of that, but we need to address our citizens that we have here right now and what they want. They want single family homes that they can afford. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Scares?
Good evening. My name is Jim Scares and I live in the Westover District. As a member of the Board of the Pennsylvania County Department of Social Services, I would like to give this board and the county citizens an update on last night's meeting. It was that time of the year to elect new officers and appoint new committee members per our bylaws. After reviewing our bylaws, it was determined that since Ms. Eames was only appointed as an interim member of the Board of Supervisors, she was not prohibited from also serving on the Department of Social Services Board until such time as she is elected as a permanent member of the Board of Supervisors. After discussion and a unanimous vote, Ms. Nancy Eames was appointed as chair, Mr. Lee Cameron was appointed as vice chair, and Mr. Bob Carburg was appointed as parliamentarian. Appointed to the Budget Committee was Mr. Scares, Mr. Cameron, and Mr. Bray as chair. Appointed to the Building Committee was Mr. Adams, Mr. Dawson, and Mr. Scares as chair. Appointed to the Personnel Committee was Ms. Eames, Mr. Bray, and Mr. Austin as chair. That concludes my update for the DSS Board. Next, I would like to comment on the new property assessment that was discussed during the work session. The assessment that was done by Bright Minds cost over two million dollars and increased property tax values by twenty-seven percent. After former Chairman Ingram publicly malign Bright Minds in our board meetings in Star Tribune, he raised questions as to the accuracy of the Bright Minds assessment. This in turn tarnished the assessment in the eyes of the county citizens and raised an outcry for the board not to accept the assessment. The former chairman failed to explain in his ramblings that the previous leadership of the board had intended to lower the tax rates to adjust for the rise in property tax values so that our property taxes would stay pretty much the same. By law, the tax rates can only be raised one percent over the previous year's rate, but they can be lowered as well. Getting back to this new assessment completed by Parsons Group, if the numbers are correct, we will see property tax value increase of fifty percent across the board. That's two percentage points from double the increase of the Bright Minds assessment. Instead of looking at a twenty-seven percent property tax value increase thanks to former Chairman Ingram's incompetence, not only is the county out two million dollars that we should not have had to spend, county citizens are also now facing a fifty percent property tax value increase. My question for this board is, can the tax rate be lowered enough to offset the property tax increase without sending us all to the poorhouse? One good note tonight, though, is that the Tunstall District now has another choice for supervisor in Josh Austin, who has thrown his hat in the race for the Board of Supervisors. Elections- tax increase without sending us all to the poorhouse? One good note tonight, though, is that the Tunstall District now has another choice for supervisor in Josh Austin, who has thrown his hat in the race for the Board of Supervisors. Elections definitely have consequences, folks. My advice is to choose wisely Tunstall District.
Thank you, Mr. Scares.
Kim Greer.
Welcome, ma'am. How you doing?
My name is Kim Greer and I live on Martin Drive, right beside the tower. We are one of the properties that are going to be hemmed in by this development with the roads on both sides of our property. And one of our biggest fears is that in time, the roads will have to be widened and that will take people's land from them, the landowners, but with us, it bothers us because we have a graveyard in our front yard and we're concerned about that. I am thankful, however, that the developers have agreed to do a traffic study. Thus far, the only complaint that we've had with traffic on Martin Drive is the speed limit. It has been said that we built next to a bluegrass park, a furniture factory, and a wedding venue, and never complained about traffic until now. The problem with that statement is that the bluegrass park was closed when we built there. I believe it closed about 25 years ago and we've been there for 22. And when the furniture factory was open, it only employed 100 to 150 people, not 2,000. Heather's wedding venue has never caused a problem for any traffic on our road and I'm sure that she'll tell you she's never had 2,000 to 4,000 people at a wedding at one time. And plus, a wedding is one day. It's not all the time, every day. So traffic from those places, it fails in comparison to the traffic coming from this if it's approved. And about the setbacks, in a recent planning commission meeting, there was a gentleman that owned an ATV park and he wanted to have his setbacks changed from 300 foot to 50 foot from the people that surrounded his property. The planning commission gave him some things that he asked for, but they kept his setbacks at 300 foot for an ATV park. Now, I know an ATV park is loud, especially, like the lady said, sometimes she has 200 to 300 people on that at a time, but I believe this small 15-minute city is going to make a whole lot of racket too, the way I see it. But we begged for a bigger setback for over six weeks and finally on Thursday, we heard that they're offering 100 foot. But according to, I know we shouldn't say anything because according to one of the developers, we should be happy because that's all we're going to get. That's what we were told. So I have also read about people that border this property and that most of them are in agreeance and happy about it, but that's not true. I've been around and talked to several of those people that live that are bordering up against this and they're not happy about it at all. And, you know, all I say is something like this of this magnitude, in my opinion, should be voted on by the people. I think the people should be able to vote, but it's up to y'all and we'll be praying for y'all as you make your, but just please remember those families as you do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
How you doing tonight?
I'm doing well. My name is Jason Hedman. I live at 15081 Martinsville Highway, directly across from this development. And I've got just a few bullet points I'd like to implore you guys to listen to. I looked up your bylaws. In the preamble, it states, "To our county commission, bylaw states citizens and businesses are entitled to fair and ethical and accountable local government." That's you guys. Item number one of those bylaws states, "Public interest must be their primary concern. They will assure fair and equitable treatment of all persons, claims, and transactions." Item number one also states, "They will assure fair and equitable treatment of all persons, claims, transactions coming before the Board." Item number seven states, "Members shall publicly share substantive information that is relative to the matter under consideration by the Board, which they have received from outside the public decision-making process." I say all that because letters were indeed sent to 44 addresses that surround this development, proposed development. Signs on the property were placed around the property, one of which I could find today. One. I found one sign. It was about a two-by-two sign and it said, "There's a meeting." That was it. The letter received said, "There's a meeting." That's it. No mention of the plan, no mention of the size of the plan, what the plans were, none of that. We never got that. And I'm one of those 44 people that got the letter. The sign that was on the side of the road could not be seen from the road unless you pulled it in the medium of the road and looked at it. You had to, I took a picture of it. I got video, I've got evidence that there was one sign. I rode around that perimeter again today and could find no other evidence of signs. Meetings were held, but substantive information was not distributed to our people, the people that are in this room that don't want this to happen. It says there were visits paid to the, and actually the lady previous to me said, "There were people that were talked to." We never were talked to. Nobody ever came to our house and we are directly connected to what's going on here. Of the 44 notification letters sent out, according to the Star Tribune article that I read, there are 2,702 citizens within five miles of this plan, the radius of this plan. Less than 44 of us got actual information. That's all I have to say. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name is Deborah Taylor. I live on 58 West, directly across from this proposed development in Axton as well. I'm here as the rest to voice our concerns that if the county Board of Supervisors were to vote to amend all of the codes that would have to be changed to develop this high-population density town, it would make it easy for these intrusive developments to appear in other front and backyards anywhere in Pennsylvania County, not just the Tunstall District, Ringgold, Chatham, everywhere. Most of those who chose to live in this area do so for the main purpose of living a quiet, peaceful, private, beautiful, and safe environment. The, this will very likely mean potential rezoning in order to move current Tunstall residents, children, to other schools within the county. They will not be happy. This county already suffers from shortages of teachers, bus drivers, EMS and fire volunteers, as well as the lack of equipment needed to actually contain a fire in a high-density development such as this. Not to mention our Sheriff's Department would need many more officers and much faster response times. And to be clear, there is no argument against a housing community on this purchased property. It is theirs to build a housing community. I personally hope that anyone pursuing the American dream of homeownership will be able to find affordable property in this area without the problems that come along with the heavy congestion that this proposed mixed-use development will most definitely cause. We already have medical center, restaurants, pharmacy, and other amenities that can accommodate and would appreciate the number of residents that a new housing development would bring in this area. Not to mention, there would be plenty of space, I'm sure, somewhere for other commercial ventures such as a grocery store to be built on an already-zoned commercial property in the area. Therefore, there's absolutely no need to amend codes to allow one to be built inside of this very congested division. Only, let's see. I'm sorry. I had to get rid of some things. But it does seem, it just feels to us that there's been a dire rush and push for this and not enough notification to the people in this area and the 44 people were not enough considering how many people that travel through that area to and from work every day that will have to deal with now a ridiculous amount of traffic and the lack of safety that we will start having to lock our doors. And I'm not happy about that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Thomas Murphy. I live in the Tunstall District, right off Peach Orchard Road, and everyone here has been expressing the concern about the density that this is going to bring to our area and to the area anywhere in Pennsylvania County once we start changing codes to allow high-density living. I grew up outside of Washington DC, in Montgomery County. That's what all of this is about. If you go from here to Richmond and beyond towards DC and towards Front Royal, you're going to see the consequences of this type of a development. The density right now for Pennsylvania counties is about 63 people per square mile. In this one little square mile, you want to put between 5,000 and 6,000 people. That would be doubling the population of Axton over a period of time. Now, we realize that growth and development needs to happen, but it should be done in a way that communicates with residents and the citizens to plan out a plan that fits our community, that we can all live with and it still be a pleasant place to live. Right now, we rate very high in a lot of aspects of a small town where people want to live. We have good air quality. We have good water quality and that's shed water in our streams and our rivers in the area. We have all of this. We have a low rate of respiratory disease in this area because of the air quality. We have a low rate of cancer and these things. And this is all brought because it's not stressful to live here. When you pop the cork on this development, this cork is going to pop all over the county. And pretty soon, we're going to be like any bloody cells in the north in suburban, in high-dense living. 58 eventually will be, from a four-lane highway, will become a six-lane highway just to handle traffic. So that's the future of what we face. I would hate to see my kids and my grandkids say, "Do you remember what it used to be like? You know, when you could go out and, oh, there's a farm here, there's a farm there." You know, it won't be there anymore. I want to thank you for your time and hope you give this serious consideration, both of these things that are presenting you with the RPD changes and with the development. We welcome a development. Bring some housing and a plan that fits the community and everybody will embrace it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Jane Kendrick.
Hi. How are you, Mr. Gold?
Doing good.
Thank you. My name is Jane Kendrick. As most of y'all probably know, my husband and I live at Joe Carter Road in the Brasville community in the Tunstall District. As you may know, my husband and I are part of the Axton Community Group. We, the community group, have worked very hard, as you can see by my partial stack of papers, since we have learned about the development, the proposed development on May 22nd, and that is the date that we learned about it. And so I just want to say a couple of things regarding that. I'm going to go off script here. One thing was, we found out about that in the newspaper. And in subsequent articles, we read that evidently everyone else was invited to the party except us. So when we have this concept of a planned development and the stakeholders were involved, my question is exactly who were the stakeholders because we certainly were left out of that loop. Now, since that time, in working with the developers, talking with them, I like them. I think there's a mutual respect between us. We just have varying opinions of what this development might look like. Honestly, I would have loved for them to have sat down with some of us months ago and said, "Look, we've got this property. What are the needs? What do people enjoy? Let's work on this together." We are not a contrary people. We really are not. So now, back to my little bit of notes here. Let me just say about these people because there was something said about my husband and I. Why are you involved? Because you don't live there. Well, there's a couple of things. These are good people. They are the salt-of-the-earth kind of people. They are the kind of people you want on your payrolls if you're a business owner. They're going to show up even they don't feel good. They're going to show up even though the baby was up half the night crying. They're the one that work hard, pay the taxes. They're the ones that say to you, "Hey, if you need anything, give me a holler." And then you know what? When you call them, they drop everything and they come. That's who we're talking about. We are not talking about contrary, narrow-minded, difficult people to get along with. Martin Luther King Jr. was put in jail in April of 1963 in Birmingham, Alabama. He wrote a famous letter, and if you have not read it, it's lengthy, but you should go and look at it. The beginning of the letter was actually written on scraps of newspaper that were smuggled into him. This is one of the things he said, and I quote, to answer the question, "Why are we involved?" "I am here," King said, "because I was invited here. I am here because I have organizational ties here. Moreover, I am cognizant of the interrelatedness of all communities and states. I cannot sit idly by in Atlanta and not be concerned about what happens in Birmingham. Neither can my husband and I sit back quietly on a little dirt country rural road in Brasville and let things happen just three miles down the road." So to the Board, I say, "We welcome housing in a moderate size and we welcome working with the developers." We do. We are not difficult. We're not contrary." And in closing, I just want to say one more thing.
Ms. Garrick, need to wind it down.
I know my time's up. I'm finishing. I'm sorry.
Okay. Wind it down.
Okay. I just want to say that as we improve the county, and we do want to look at improvements to it, we should always be very aware of the people who already live here. And that, we are the people who have been kind of left out. We have heard repeatedly, "This is what's good for the county. This is what's good for the future. This is what is good for people coming in. This is what people coming in want." Well, now you have heard a little bit of what we would like to see and we would like to see our way of life retained. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
David Willis.
Doing good, sir?
I guess that's how, she told me I could ask. Since I had 300 signatures, I have 300 signatures against the, thank you. I have 300 signatures against the codes. Can I speak for 10 minutes because 100 people's, 100 people's time?
No, sir. Going to grant you three minutes like did everybody else. Your time's running out.
Here we go. I'm sorry we couldn't take care of this today because I would like to have this over with today, you know, instead of putting it off for another month. But first of all, I guess we can't pass the codes because the public hasn't even heard about it. Everybody I speak to, nobody's heard about it. Nobody's heard about the codes changing at all. I've got 300 signatures from three stores in one month and that's say- I've got 300 signatures from three stores in one month, and that's, say, how many stores are there? How many stores are there in the county? And being that I have 300 signatures, and there's not even 100 people in this room, I, just by my fame being at the stores, in three stores, I've let more people know in three stores than the counties let know at all, you know? Anyway, nobody knows about these code changes except the people in this room and the people that have signed my petition. That's all the people that knows about this, that's against it. If everybody else knows in this county, could you imagine how many signatures I'd have? Three stores, that's 300 signatures in one month. That's 100 signatures a store. So, what, you got 20, 30 more stores? So that's 2,000, 3,000 more signatures within one month. And she's got, I handed her all 300 signatures, and she's going to make copies of them and give me the thing back. But like I said, I would rather have this done, over with today. I'm tired of this. Tired of lies and everything else. Things be hidden everywhere. I had to start, they started a discussion page on Facebook, and when I got on there trying to talk about the codes, they cut me off. Vic Ingram got on the Facebook and told the woman on Facebook who to cut off Facebook. They cut me off and cut off other people that were against the thing, to keep us from being heard. And then, when I put my stuff on Facebook, they blocked, they cut the, when I put stuff on Facebook, screenshots of everything that was said on there, they cut the whole, they went with the whole page, and so everything was gone. But I had screenshots of everything that was said. Then they talked junk about me and harassed my sister while, after I was blocked. So all I could do was hit faces on there while I was happy or mad, you know? And then, I've got on the, and I had to start the proposed, start the proposed codes page so it would, so people could hear me. And I've gone all over Facebook and everywhere trying to post stuff and comment, and I've been blocked every single which way I can go. And I've got screenshots where I've been blocked lately in the Living in Danville and Pennsylvania County page. And the guy says that I, he said, "You are welcome to post now." It's all been cleared up. And I go there, still can't post or comment. And there was a, there was a post in there talking about this, talking about this codes and stuff. And I tried to make comments on it, and I was blocked from there. And I could comment on anything else on that page, on the site, but that, you know? And I asked the guy, I wrote the guy, Matt Bell, "What, what, what's going on? Why can't I comment? Why can't I comment on it?" He said, "Everything is open where you can. I don't know why." Because some people have it, don't want people to know. And we know, and some people like to harass people, and lots of, lots of codes of ethics have been broken during this whole situation, just like Ben said earlier. And Mr. Ingram is one of them. There's been a lot. He's hidden things. He's lied to people and everything else. And I'm tired of it. And I'm tired of being blocked everywhere. I try to tell people. I have to go out in public and walk up and hand people stuff and talk to them. And when I hear that they have been, they don't know anything about it, never heard about it or anything like that, they are upset.
Mr. Willis, you need to wind it down. Your time's expired, brother.
I didn't even realize. I am sorry.
Thank you.
I wanted 10 minutes. I had a lot to say, but I'm good.
Thank you.
It's just, and one more thing. We do have another option, as I sent y'all email earlier about the other things we could do in this county besides that.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing?
Doing good.
Good.
My name is Josh Alston. I live in the Tunstall District. I am running for Board of Supervisors. Thank y'all first for delaying the vote on the codes tonight. We appreciate that. Give the county and give the citizens time to learn more about what's going on. As I said before, when I moved out here, we were looking for a place that we could raise our kids in an area that was rural agricultural country. We thought we found it until, what, about a month and a half ago now? Well, right at two months ago, we found out in the newspaper that there was a multi-use development coming. Well, what's this multi-use development going to be? Well, it's going to be townhouses. It's going to be single-family homes. It's going to be a daycare. 8,000-foot daycare? Is that correct? How many kids can you hold in an 8,000-foot daycare? Where around here has another 8,000-foot daycare? Square foot, excuse me. My apologies. A grocery store. Grocery stores are nice. How hard is it to run right up here to Laurel Park or right down there to Danville? I don't mind. I don't think most of the people in this room mind. We all live in the community we live in because of the rural area that it is. We don't mind housing developments. We don't mind new people coming into our community. But don't bring Charlotte. Don't bring Charlottesville. Don't bring Raleigh into our community. Think about the people that you are affecting that have lived there, that do call it home. You want us to leave? I think one gentleman earlier said something about why should he have to sell his property? Because we have to have a Charlotte. We have to have a Greensboro. We have to have a Raleigh. Break it up and spread it out. Is this the only area in Pennsylvania County that can hold housing? Are we the only group of people in the county that have to deal with having 6,000 people, 5,000, 6,000 people shoved into a square mile? I think he asked all of y'all one time before this, tonight. None of y'all want that in your backyard either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Dalton and members of the board, I am Frank Fox, Chatham Blair's district. I am not here tonight to speak as a candidate for supervisor, but as a three-term member of the Danville Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce and having represented Pennsylvania County since 2010 on the West Piedmont Planning District Commission Working Committee. The regional investment in the southern Virginia mega site is over $240 million to date. Many question that investment and what is being done to attract business successfully to the site. Much has been addressed in workforce development and infrastructure to be site-ready. The two sticking points for potential businesses compared to other sites have been the fast tracking of road improvements, a public investment, and available housing, a private investment. Regarding road improvements, Delegate Les Adams' sponsored passage of House Bill 2302 in the most recent session to allow the governor to direct funds to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for projects determined to be necessary to support major economic development initiatives and authorize the $35 million for the enhancement of existing economic development projects. By allowing the bypass of the VDOT six-year plan, this represents a solution for the public issue with the southern Virginia mega site. In our West Piedmont Planning Commission report prepared annually for the U.S. Department of Commerce, Pennsylvania County demographics showed a 2% decline in population from the 2010 to the 2020 census. In the SWOT analysis in this report, declining population trends and stock and age of suitable housing are listed as recognized weaknesses. The proposed Axton Housing Development rezoning case, R21016, deserves sincere consideration by this board after addressing all concerns regarding the details as listed by engaged citizens, incentivize individuals and families to relocate to the region. Interestingly, the current economic and innovation projects for Pennsylvania County, including with Danville City, you submitted in the funding phase for the West Piedmont report are: Southern Virginia mega site, 12.5 million; Kane Creek, 4.9 million; existing sites, 3 million. Under 57 housing, livability, and equity projects for the planning district, Pennsylvania County submitted only two: upgrades to the Old Dominion Agricultural Center and trail construction for the Richmond-Danville Rail Trail. Since housing construction is indeed and should be in the private realm, we need to welcome the opportunity that R23016 represents with careful considerations of the citizens' needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Moving to rezoning public hearings. Pursuit to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and discuss specific zoning issues, zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishment, accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for moving the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all its decisions and regulatory are directed to their, regulations are directed to these goals and that each be considered with the environment, the comprehensive plan in the best interest of the Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity.
Case R-23-015, Wayne and Sandra Troxler have petitioned to rezone 1.61 acres located on Locust Lane in the Callens-Grettnau election district from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of a second dwelling on the property. On June 6, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended by a 6-0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted with the following proffers that were submitted by the applicant. One, we forfeit all uses allowed in the A1 Agricultural District that are not allowed by right in the RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District as shown in Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-267, and the second dwelling will not be manufactured housing, i.e. single-wide or double-wide. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Wayne Troxler will be representing the petition. I believe he's here, but I have not seen him.
All right.
Is he here?
He may not be. So I will be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:58. So there's no one here to speak?
There, sir.
Okay.
I don't see.
7:58, I close the public hearing for Case R-23-015.
Okay, Mr. Dalton has asked me to take this. This is in his district. So with the motion in Case R-23-015, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 1.61 acres from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow a second dwelling to be constructed on this property.
Is that with the proffers presented by the applicant?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. It is.
Second. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to state that Mr. Troxler left me here earlier, and he just asked if we had to stay, and I told him no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Property is being rezoned.
Yep.
All right. Moving to Item 11, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business, Mr.?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any new business?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving down to 13 matters from the work session, should be 13A. Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that the county's health insurance premium and HSA contribution be accepted, accept the proposed premium breakdown as discussed in work session and increase the HSA contribution from $800 to $1,000 per employee per year.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Got a second by Mr. Tucker? Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. On this screen, it's showing 14A. Did you say 13A?
13A.
He's right.
Okay, okay. I'm just seeing it as 14, so I just wanted to be certain we got it right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Motion passed. It's seven yes, zero no. Moving to Item 14, Board Members' Reports. I'm going to start down at Ms. Eames. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Ms. Eames?
I welcome everyone here tonight. We like to see the citizens come out and be a part of the group. Speak your voice. And also, I would like for everyone to continue to remember Mr. Cheshire and also, excuse me, Chris C. was one of the Dan River local firemen that just passed away. He was in my district. Please remember those in prayer.
Thank you, Ms. Eames. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you know, this year, the General Assembly finally started identifying dispatchers as first responders. They are the faceless voice for those in need. And I was very honored to be able to remember Pam Holly on her 22 years of service. They all do a fabulous job, and sometimes, because we don't have a face, we forget the name. But, you know, this is the month of freedom. We just celebrated the Fourth of July. And contrary to what some people might think, public turnout is a beautiful thing. We can agree to disagree as mature adults. Of course, with that, you're going to have some cheap shots and some false accusations, but it comes with the territory. But for those of you that have been above board and very decent about your concerns, your request, I thank you for that. And I have listened, because I worked with the developers to put together six meetings. That is unheard of. And some of you were very faithful that you would get a perfect attendance award, and some only were able to hit a couple of them. But the door is still open to talk, because in the midst of all of this, it comes back to us working together and what's good collectively for everybody. And do realize, it's just like road construction. You're going to inconvenience people for a short period of time, but in the end, hopefully it'll be a smooth highway by which we all can travel. But I do want to thank y'all for being here. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time. Good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Scares?
Of course, I'd like to welcome Nancy Eames, excuse me, Dan River District Supervisor. It's a pleasure to have served with you all the hard work you've done on the DSS Board. It's been recognized by that board, and I certainly have kept an eye on the things you've done over the last two or three years, and I appreciate everything you've done. Also, want to thank the board. We, and the consent agenda that was passed earlier, we put forth a new service agreement with the fire and rescue folks. I've been accused of not supporting fire and rescue, but what this new service agreement does is it puts back the accountability we had last year that was taken away. And I had said at the time, until the accountability is brought back, I would not support any more pay or operational cost funding for the fire and rescue folks. With this new service agreement, I can take that back. I can go ahead and start approving. And if you look over our track record, since 2018, we've approved increases of over 44% for their operational budgets. And I want to continue to that. They do a great service for the county, and they deserve our support, but I just wanted that accountability brought back, and this new service agreement does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I too want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and expressing your concerns. I do want to thank the company and developers for your endeavors to try to listen and be accommodating to these folks. I do want to address one issue. Uh, I do want to address one issue. I want to encourage the citizens to seek out truthful and factual information. There's a lot of information that you can get from the county, uh, website, and you can for you for things. I have been attacked in blogs and Facebook and everything else, uh, and most of it's untrue. And the sad part about it is there's an individual that can't stand on his own name. He has to take a national name and tag a little hashtag with it so people even look at his information. That disappoints me. But seven, eight, seven years and seven months I've been serving on this board, and not one time has that small-minded individual ever called or reached out to me in any capacity. So, I challenge you citizens to realize what Facebook and those websites are. They're nothing but gossip and trying to, uh, change people's minds and tear down. Whether you like him or not, this is exactly the same kind of politics that Donald Trump faced the whole time he was in office. Whether you like him or not, that's what he did the whole time. And not all of it was lies, but a lot of it is coming out to be false. So, you little people can continue to personally attack me all you want because you matter to me at zero. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Dalton.
I'm waiting for everybody to finish laughing. I don't like this. Um, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out this evening. Thank each one of you for speaking. Um, I know when you stand, uh, and you have three minutes, you get really, some people get really nervous and they say, "Oh, I'm gonna go up there and bust them up," and then you get up there and get scared. But thank you for bringing your information to us. You've been heard. Um, a lot of you have called, all of us today. And, um, your voice matters, your phone calls matter, your text. Uh, I've had a chance to call a few back today when I was going down the road on the way. I appreciate everybody coming out. Thanks to the developers, um, for staying. They didn't have to, they stayed, they listened, and I appreciate that. Um, but that's, that's a bit, that's about it. I want to thank your staff for putting our meetings together, uh, and everything that they do and, um, just making our meetings go as smooth as possible. And also, want to welcome Ms. Eames, it's her first time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Eames, welcome. Thank you for being a part of, uh, the Board of Supervisors representing, uh, Dan River. We'll continue to, uh, keep Mr. Cheshire in prayer. Um, I also want to thank the staff for, uh, a job well done in terms of putting the meetings and the agendas together, and they're doing the heavy lifting behind the scenes. So, thank you so much. To the developers, we thank you. We salute you for being with us tonight. Um, you know, this, again, I tell all of us that, uh, this great country of ours was founded upon compromise. I appreciate all of the citizens coming out tonight. We have, uh, sincerely listened to you. We appreciate your, your passion in terms of, uh, your wishes and, and I feel that, you know, moving forward, uh, we can all kind of work together and find some middle ground there. Um, and also, I was sitting here listening to, uh, Mr. Warren's remarks. I, I want people to know that, um, I'm not on Facebook, and the reason I'm not on Facebook is I have lived most of my adult life in the, uh, public specter, so I really appreciate some sense of privacy, uh, when I can get away from people after serving the public. And I commented to someone earlier, uh, this evening that, uh, we also applaud this Board of Supervisors, these men and this young lady, uh, because it gives public servant a, a, a deeper meaning because the, the operative is servant, and, and that's what all of us strive to do. So, we appreciate everyone coming tonight. Mr. Dalton, good meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And also a very, uh, uh, good meeting with all of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I'm gonna have to echo some of the same comments. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, speaking, your concerns, everybody being respectful with your time, you know, trying to stick to our three minutes so everybody could get a chance. Uh, again, I want to thank everybody. Thank your developers for coming out, and let's just work together and, um, be good to the neighbors and make, hopefully we can make this thing work out. And, um, I want to thank Ms. Eames, welcome you to the board also. Um, thank all the board members. We sit up here, we, we just like everybody else. We're not perfect. We have to make a whole lot of decisions, sometime it good ones, sometime it bad ones, but we try to do what's right. And I want to thank all the board for that. And with that, that's it. Mr. Terrell, anything from you, sir?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of comments. I also want to thank Supervisor Eames, staff completed, or welcome, I'm sorry, not thank, but welcome. Staff completed an informational session with her on organizational function, goals and responsibilities, and her relationship with the board and you folks, the citizens. I want to commend the Finance Director and the HR Director on this year's insurance renewal changes. Uh, a major part of this year's insurance contribution changes are to address an issue that we have across all departments and agencies involving the high cost of family, the family medical health plan. I know many of you are affected by that. We're concerned with that as well with our staff. Uh, this does impact recruitment and retention. So, I want to highlight that this year's plan affects the premium in the, uh, high deductible family plan and reduces it by a hundred dollars a month, saving the employee a hundred dollars a month or 1,200 annually and puts 200 dollars, uh, in their pocket with the HSA for a benefit of 1,400. I think that's remarkable. Uh, Sheriff, I hope he's here to hear that. This will do a lot to aid in ret, re, retention and recruitment of qualified staff. So, I want to again thank the Finance Director and the HR Director for the hard work on that. Uh, finally, I just wish to thank the supervisors, the staff, and you, the citizens, for your continued advice and, advice and support of me, uh, as I make a transition to this community and continue working together to improve your important lives in, of all the folks in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Hunt, you have anything, sir?
No, let's go home.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you.